Hey there.
Good, good, good.
How's the shoulder doing?
Shoulder?
For Shelley.
Oh, oh, she's on, she's muted. Let me unmute her. There you go.
Started physical therapy like a week ago and passive motion. So I'm about in my sling part time. It's kind of nice.
Yes.
Good. Thank you for asking. I'm getting better. Perfect time to do it during COVID.
So Guido, how are you today?
Uh, good news. I got the RFP out for the housing element. Bad news, I lost one of my planners. She resigned to move back to Colorado. Yeah. So, and she was really good, really, really good planner. So yeah, yeah. But that's, that's the nature of being a manager. You know, guys probably all know that, right?
They leave after the year end bonuses is what we found.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have that in city government, but yes.
Yeah.
Where did the person move to in Colorado?
Uh, she mentioned the name of the city. It was a not Louisville or
Louisville?
Something like that. Yeah.
My daughter and son-in-law live in Louisville.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
Lovely community.
Jolie.
Is that south of Denver or north?
Me. Jolie's probably me.
Oh, oh, no, or north, sorry, north.
My sister lives in Windsor, which is near Fort Collins.
Oh, sure. Yeah, it's all sort of in that triangle. Yeah.
And I love Boulder. We go and visit my sister. We did prior to COVID. And she's got her and her husband, they got a couple of daughters and one, one daughter's got five kids and the other one's got six. And they range.
It's very affordable there.
Well, yeah, they, they've got, you know, 5,000 square foot houses and in nice neighborhoods and, you know, half acre lots for, you know, half million dollars.
Yep.
But we like, we like Boulder. It's a, it's sort of a, it's a university town and lots of nice restaurants, lots of people. You get the university there. A little bit like Palo Alto, you know.
Yeah.
Not like Los Altos. We can't beat Los Altos.
And Louisville has a wonderful pathway system that runs, it's almost like a major park that runs in between a lot of the subdivisions with a pathway that leads to downtown. They've done a good job planning there.
Don't tell Guido. We don't want any moving.
No, 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 no. I, I'm actually very active hiking, running. And so, yeah, I'd heard Colorado has like some certain percentage of the whole state has like a trailhead within, can't remember what it was, like a mile, half mile. Yeah, so it's a very
The air's very, the air's very thin there. You wouldn't want to go there.
What kind of running do you do, Guido?
I used to don't do more longer distance since now I'm just doing five to six miles three times a week. So just and then two, two days a week I do upper body. I, I, before COVID, I was doing a Spartan races. I don't know if you guys know of this. It's just, it's, it's a cardio plus weights. You have to be good at both. So, but I'm, I'm more of a a runner. I did cross country and track. So, yeah.
I'm a big runner. I do like, well, before the arm, five, six miles, three times a week. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm an ex marathoner, so.
Oh, very good, very good.
Good, gosh.
Yeah, more than me, more than me, more than me. So. Yeah, I enjoy it. Just good to keep up the cardio. So.
Well, then around here, I mean, you go up to Rancho, you can go to Redwood City, Mountain, Woodside, you go to Hunter Park. We've got so much open spaces, you know, take off and you can be in the hills in 15 minutes.
Yeah, that, that, that actually how is I, how I got introduced to Los Altos. There's actually a Los Altos Running Club.
Yeah.
They're in downtown and way before I started in Los Altos, not all the time, but before I had kids, we would run from that running store, all different trails. So that's how, that's how I got used to.
That's 7:00 AM Running Club. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Adam used to run that.
They, they just opened Foothills Park now to the public as of today.
Nice. Yeah. And then I, I was, when I was still working for East Palo Alto, I used to run with the Palo Alto Running Club. So they would start at Stanford Track and they would actually run the whole dish.
Right.
Oh.
In fact, that's pretty, that's a pretty intense. That's a good six mile.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me tell you about the Palo Alto Running Club. I showed up at the second meeting with the Palo Alto when I started. John Byrd was the co-founder.
Right.
We started the club. It was like, the first night there was 20 of us and it was typically we ran on Wednesday night. It was not uncommon for a Wednesday night run through downtown Palo Alto, around Palo Alto. We would have 80, 90, we had over 100 people.
Wow.
Wow.
I was the president for, I don't know, two or three years.
Wow. Well, that's awesome. That's awesome.
Yeah, it's good, good club. We had, we had some really good runners and was really nice. The guys were okay. I mean, they're, they're good, good runners.
Yeah.
What we need is that some of the Stanford women, track and field people will come out.
Oh, wow.
You'd love it because they take off with the guys that were really hot. You know what I mean?
Right.
And, and, and the girls, excuse me, the women would come back before them. They'd kick butt.
Right.
And those of us, those of us that were middle of the pack runners loved it because the guys with the egos that wouldn't stop.
Yeah.
They'd drag it in sweating. And here's, you know, the Stanford women are there and they finished. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. How are your knees now, Richard?
My knees are fine. I, I quit running about two years ago because I got tendonitis in the foot. And it got to the point where it was in, I couldn't walk for more than about 45 minutes. And I, you know, I had the foot x-ray and did the whole nine yards, went to PT for about a year and a half. And finally, it's okay. I got to the point where I started cycling to make up for it. So now I'm into cycling. Trying to get in hour, hour and a half every couple of days. So.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was doing half marathons and then just, you know, starting to have some wear and tear. So that's why I switched to the Spartan races. So it's more, it's cardio, but it's more upper body too, just to, just to mix it up. So, yeah, so.
I, I loved running halves. I mean, you could go out and run a half and
Yeah.
come back and, I mean, you could really run your fanny off and come back and get up the next day and walk.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah.
Where the marathons, you, you, 26 miles, remember we did the whole Honolulu Marathon one year? And the next day, you know, we were going to get out and do a light jog and get from, you know, here to the corner.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I don't know how anybody does those.
Yeah, I did. Yeah. So when, when I was really, this was before the kids, like, yeah, I would do a half marathon and then by, yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday of that week, I'd be fine.
Yeah.
And, you know, and then actually one, one, I actually did three half marathons back to back to back, three weekends. Cause you know, you recover pretty fast.
Oh, yeah. That's good.
That was 10 years ago. Now I'm just doing this little four to five mile 10Ks and Spartan races and all that.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I miss it. I really, I wish I could get out and run, but.
I gave up the halves two years ago. It was just too, too much work.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. It looks like we got the full complement of people here. So.
Guys don't want to hear us talk about running? Just one of you.
Um, okay. I think we have everyone. Maybe we're missing someone. But anyways, call to order Planning Commission meeting for December 17th, 2020. And I'll let John call rule.
Chair Ahie.
Here.
Vice Chair Bodnar. I hear, see her. Commissioner Doran.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Merrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Mensinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Roche.
Here.
And Commissioner Steinle. I think we're just missing Commissioner Steinle, but we do have a core, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. So first up, public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone out of the participants with a comment not on the agenda?
Let me ask a question as a, as a newbie. We received, I think everybody probably received the letter from the couple of families concerning the proposed home, the remodeled home in Los Altos and discussing the ADU and the conditions and people working on the particular home. When we receive something like that, is that strictly for information even though we don't have any part of it? Cause it goes to design review? It's just
That, that project was considered yesterday by the Design Review Commission. And I believe they received the same email, why the sender sent it on to the Planning Commission. I don't have an answer, but we were going to reach out to them and let them know that for projects like that, the appropriate body to send them to is, is the Design Review Commission, that the Planning Commission doesn't review those types of applications.
Okay. And, and what we're talking about that the ADU, they talked about they were and questions on it because they're building the ADU at the back of the property, four feet from the property line and the concern about privacy and because they're going to, I guess, good size ADU. And approximately the property line. And I know that we don't have any control over it's four feet away. Is there any way that, any, I appreciate anybody's feedback on whether that's too close. Your feeling is too close to a property line and
Maybe, maybe you can cover this a little bit.
Yeah. I was just going to say, since this isn't on the agenda, maybe what we need to do is come back with our ADU update for the new commissioners. I don't want to bore, I don't want to bore the, the, the ones that heard it before, but we spent a lot of time in training on ADUs and what the, you know, what you can do and what you can't do. Because the ADU ordinance was at this planning commission for three or four meetings. So what we could do is we could just in January, do a brief update. So you, you, you get some education on the ADUs.
Good. Thank you very much.
And, and luckily they really haven't tweaked or done anything with ADU laws for 2021, not like 2020, when we had five or six competing bills that were all inconsistent and it was very hard to sort through. So I don't know. I'll work with Guido and John and maybe we can have a, a brief update in January for you.
Thank you.
That worked.
Great. Um, all right. So if there's no public comment, I'll go to Planning Commission minutes from December 3rd, 2020. If anyone has comments on those or wants to make a motion to approve them. Anyone?
Don't move.
Okay. Anyone second? I can second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December the 3rd, 2020. Chair Ahie.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bodnar. Is yours? Say yes. Commissioner Doran.
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Mensinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Roche.
Yes.
And Commissioner Steinle.
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay, great. So next up, public hearing ZTA 20 dash 0002 zoning code amendment. I'll hand it to staff.
Great. Thank you, Chair Ahie. We are coming back for the second public hearing for the Boarding House Ordinance. Just to provide some context, we did come in October for an ordinance and we heard loud and clear from the commission that regulating not prohibiting boarding house was the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Heard loud and clear that they wanted to have a kind of a medium position between full CUT and, you know, no regulation. So kind of where, where we landed was similar to like a home occupation permit, which I'll show on the next screen. For most cities, for people who are aware, most cities have a home occupation ordinance. It basically says you can run a business out of your house if you follow certain requirements. The, 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 the general theme among most cities is, you know, we don't want it to unnecessarily burden your neighbor. We don't want to cause undue traffic. You have to follow all the local requirements in terms of noise and no excessive visitors. And so along that same lines, that's how we have rewritten the boarding house ordinance. And a lot of those questions related to the specific language, I would refer to Eric, the Deputy City Attorney.
Can you go back to number three real quick?
Sure.
So just a question, is everyone who's working from home required now to, would be required, fall under home occupation?
No, I doubt that would be, yeah, just like in the boarding house where it says, you know, if you have two or less borders, we're not going to, you know, regulate. This is for if you're actually running like a full fledged. You know, like a
I agree with Ronate. I mean, are we all going to
Actually, everybody.
licenses?
Yeah, well.
I mean, I understand that wasn't the intent, but there's not like probably a person who isn't now in violation of the
Well, I mean, it's
A lot of us are running our business from our homes.
Yeah, well, but the real intent is, you know, obviously this is of a more, well, of a more permanent nature. And obviously you can't account in an ordinance for a pandemic, right? So this is, yeah, so. So we did rewrite the ordinance to have a registration provision. Conditions can be added to the boarding house registration. There was a provision per the commission's request to have a revocation if somebody is unduly impacting their neighbor. And as defined in the ordinance, the boarding house is for two or more individuals. And as we, we discussed in October, there are some exceptions that we have to do under state law. This does not cover residential care facilities. That's a whole separate area of planning. We must give a reasonable accommodations to comply with fair housing laws. And this doesn't impact transitional supportive or emergency housing. We, we do believe that the adoption of the ordinance is exempt from CEQA. We believe that this is consistent with the general plan. And the only other item of note is that, you know, the Planning Commission is an advisory body to the city council. Jolie has been in communication with some of the council members. We're not entirely clear which direction the council is going to go on this ordinance. And so to give the council an opportunity to have full discretion, we are recommending tonight that two motions be undertaken, one to deny the original ordinance and the other motion to approve the ordinance before you. So that if the council does choose to prohibit, that the item would not have to come back to planning commission. So that concludes my initial presentation. We are recommending once again that the project is exempt from CEQA. That city staff direct, are directed to file a notice of exemption and that the original ordinance be denied. And that the ordinance before you today is recommended to the city council. So that includes my initial presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Um, any questions for Guido or staff?
I, I do actually, what Commissioner Bodnar said, you know, kind of strikes me that after pandemic and after staff, you guys are long gone and there's a different staff. Is there something that will distinguish a, an architect from working at home versus that, you know, boarding house business? Is there something you would put in there that I, I agree with Commissioner Bodnar's, there's just that little bit of, you know, inequity in that, that leaves it really open. If my neighbor's mad at me, can they come after me? I never thought about it until you said that.
This is, you know, when we have something so, I mean, this is pretty clear.
Yeah.
And it's going to, it sounds like it's going to get applied arbitrarily based on people who are upset, who are have upset with their neighbors. So it's like either you are consistent with the application of a rule and you apply to everybody. But if you're like, this rule doesn't, as written, it no longer applies, I think, to our current situation or any situation in the future. Like that notion that people are not going to be working from home is gone permanently.
Yeah. And I agree, it needs to be clarified or taken out. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, certainly if the commission wants to take up the home occupation ordinance that, and it's a very limited ordinance in the Los Altos city. That, that would obviously be a separately agendized item. That's not really before the commission tonight. I was only using that as an example that it would follow a similar procedure for the boarding house of, for somebody who wants to do a boarding house, then they must register with the city. John, as the Community Development Director, has given the authority under the ordinance tonight for boarding houses to add conditions and that if somebody is not fulfilling the boarding house requirements, then there is a provision in the draft ordinance to revoke it, similar to a home, but the home is not before the commission tonight.
Okay.
But I, I hear
There's separate permits. There's separate permits.
Yeah, I, I apologize if I didn't make that clear. This is just, I was using that as an example of, you know, in the, in the plethora of urban planning permits, you know, you have to the extreme, a conditional use permit or, uh, you know, a, a design review permit. And then on the way end of the spectrum is a, a sign permit or a home occupation. So, you know, and, and in that gradation.
I get it now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on the lower end of this permits, but it still gives the city some authority to regulate a use. So that, that's, that was the point I was trying to make. So.
So I was trying to understand, I understand this and I, I'm, I could use some more clarity. So as I was reading this, initially I thought of boarding house as a situation where a homeowner like rents to more than two people. So, uh, some, some part of their house and we were limiting it. Well, not limiting it. We were saying that if you're going to rent to more than two people, like a family, you'd have to register. But then when I looked at the definition of lodging, it actually didn't require the owner to be on site. It was really like any situation where there were two families would also have to be, well, I wasn't clear. Is it like any situation where more than two people are going to live in a space? And they're not a household unit that, that, that space has to be regi, I mean, that house has to be registered? I'm not, I wasn't, I'm not understanding this. Like, are we, what, what are we trying to prevent? And I, I think originally it was like to keep two families from living together in one house. Is that, um, I need clarity on
Yeah, and I'm
Problem we're solving.
I'm going to pass those questions off to Eric because he actually wrote most of the ordinance. So if Eric could unmute himself and provide some clarity in terms of what was the thought process behind the rewrite?
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to address both situations. And, and the reason we're trying to address the situation of, of two families living together or two or more families, which basically means if, if you have, as you indicated, if, if you have people who are living together, but not as a household unit, then, then they would be boarding the house. And, and this is trying to address hub house type situations. They're not brought together by their own choice, but are, are brought together as part of a commercial. Because that's, that's where some of the planning and zoning issues were rising from was, was those types of situations. And, and so we're trying to address that as well.
So that second part totally makes sense to me. People who are brought together, not by choice, who don't consider them a family unit. But this feels like it's actually much broader in that it doesn't allow two family units that are different. Like, for example, as I, as I read it, adult couple and maybe their children who have children move in, that's a family unit.
No, because, sorry, go ahead.
I think that counts as one family unit. So like they could have as many people as they want.
Right. If they're living as a household. So the definition of family, we were very careful because of, because of case law, because of the right of privacy and just to be respectful. We were very careful not to define family as, as, you know, blood marriage or adoption. We, it's, it's expansive to include people who live together as a household unit. So it would include sort of intentional families too.
Okay. So that, that's what I was trying to understand. Cause I was trying to understand, there's a situation that I'm aware of where two families, different families, not, not related families, were sharing one fairly large home in the neighborhood. And I didn't have an issue with it. And I'm wondering, would they, this be allowed under the, the way it's drafted right now?
I mean, if they were brought together by a landlord.
No, if they found each other.
Yeah, then in that case, that's, that's exactly the definition of a family. If, if they found each other, then they're a family regardless of blood marriage or adoption.
Okay.
Yeah, it's
So does the landlord have the obligation to register after he has identified the people? Like if he has, like, they don't know who they're going to rent to before they rent to those people. But if they discover that they're renting, I guess, if they are putting together two households, then they have to register.
Yeah, and the use is the people living there, not, not locating them. So before, before you have a situation of, of, of people living in a boarding house, you have to register so that the city knows where the use is taking place. And if it's, and, and that way the city can avoid problems rather than wait for them to happen and then try to deal with them.
Do you mention, do you mention a lot of people registering for this? Or there's a really like small group that are actually using, I think, our properties in this way?
I, I, I mean, I, I imagine it would be again, to, to use the analogy of a home occupation permit. It's hard to, it's hard to predict that. But I think with home occupation permits, you know, some people fly under the radar because they're not causing problems that, that draw attention to their use. And, and some people don't. They, they, they create issues. And at that point, you know, the staff would inquire whether or not they have the, the appropriate home occupation permit and, and would find out if they did or didn't. And, and depending upon how compliant people are with, with the rules and depending upon how many issues, you know, become apparent. I mean, that, all of that will depend upon how, how compliant people are with with this. It's, I, I guess I'm just trying to say it's, it's hard to predict. And it will depend upon what kind of problems, code enforcement problems the city sees happening.
Heck. Thank you.
And, and if I can add, the community, John Biggs is going to be in charge of figuring this out, basically is what it says, or his successor eventually. Which I hope will be a long time in the future.
We're not letting John retire ever.
Yeah, no, no, that's right. He's, he's not allowed to go on vacation or to retire. But, but, but the Community Services Director is the one who will, who will come up with the regulations under this. I think the most important part of this and, and kudos out to Eric is that the, it's, one of the concerns that we had was an absentee landlord or the, the hub house situation where you have a lesser. And it says it's under 14.31.030 on the registration. And this is on page three of the, the thing. That the registration is personally registered and does not run to the land. And that I think is the most important thing in here because it gives us control. And it, it's a really elegant solution, I think, to what was a gnarly set of problems. And so, so, you know, thumbs up Eric, you did a great job with that. That, 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 that is the key to this. And that and the fact that the, the planning director is, is or the, the, the Community Services Director is the one who's going to figure out what the rules are on, on doing this and can kick it to the Planning Commission if there's a question, you know. So it, it should be a sort of self enforcing situation. And in a situation like, like the one you're talking about, I think that would be fairly easily be taken care of. It, it, it might not enter into the system. Especially if money isn't changing hands. I mean, if, if somebody's not profiting from, in some way, from, from the fact that there's somebody else there, then I don't think any of this even gets triggered. So, you know, that, and that would be within the, you know, the purview of the, of, of staff to begin with, and ultimately the planning commission if it, if it went to that. So, um, you know, the, the, the inequity that you were concerned about, I think is one that would be taken care of. I would hope anyway.
I have a question just to, because I'm a little, obviously just joined the Planning Commission. So I wasn't here for the October discussions. Just so I am sure I understand this. It seems to me the problem that we're trying to address here is the fact that there are these homes that have, you know, pile in six or seven, you know, 20 or 30 that have, you know, pile in six or seven, you know, twenty or thirty-somethings to live there. They might pile up two to a bedroom, you know, and they might cause a problem. Is that correct, that that's what we're trying to address here?
Yes.
And we're trying to get a mechanism that we can say, we can regulate you, but not prohibit you, as long as you, and so if you follow these rules, only one person to a bedroom, you register, you don't cause problems, life is okay, but it gives us a way to address issues if some should come up. Is that, summarize it?
That's a good summary.
That's a good.
Okay, I thought that was it, just wanted to be sure.
Okay, can I, now I have a question based on that one. If you have, let's say, it doesn't have to be six, it can be three under this ordinance, you have three people. But if they consider themselves, like, they found each other, they're friends, let's say they are coming up with an idea for a really great, they're Stanford graduates, and coming up with a great idea for a company that in twenty years we're all gonna rely upon, like, are we saying those people would also have to be registered? No? Because they consider themselves a family unit?
Right, if, if you brought yourselves together, you're a family. If, if you, if you were put together as part of a commercial enterprise, then you're not a family.
So, let me ask a clarifying question then. If I rent a house and has four bedrooms, and I can't afford to pay for all four of those bedrooms, I just put an ad on Craigslist, or whatever people use these days, and get three roommates. That's okay here, and I do not have to register, because I'm not a commercial enterprise?
I, I mean, if, if you had, the way it's defined is if, if you chose to live together, as a group, you chose to live together, and you share household responsibilities, and you share, you share some obligations for each other, and you live the way a family would live, then, then, then that's a family within the definition of this. If, if, if it's just purely a money-making enterprise, and you found them, and they didn't necessarily have a choice in who their roommates were, and you're just trying to make some, some extra money since you have the extra rooms, then that would be a boarding house.
Yeah, you're going to get in some, some tricky explanations here of defining what's what, but.
Yeah, and unfortunately, that's true. And unfortunately, that, that's, that's sort of the definitional problem the case law, the case law has created. But there are clear, bright line situations that the city has had to deal with recently, where without an ordinance like this, with this ordinance, they could have dealt with those situations, but they couldn't, so.
Yeah. And the one thing, yeah, the one thing is, is they wanted to do, the task was, is to do some zoning. So we had an enforcement mechanism to prohibit these types of uses. And under the Los Altos zoning, if you're, if you're either allowed, you're permissive use, and if you're not on that list, then you're not allowed. And so, we had to make, and then what we wanted to do is to make sure that if we wanted to prohibit these types of uses, they were defined and said that you can't do them. Then we went through the whole process of, do we want these, do we not want them? And then we came up with this, well, maybe we want them, and we can issue some sort of permit. So they're only allowed with this permit, and that permit doesn't run with the land, it's not a zone change, it's, it's retaining all sorts of our control over it. So, you know, there, there may be some situations in the future that we have to look at and distinguish, but what we've done is tried to allow this sort of flexible living arrangement by requiring this type of permit. And, you know, we can always come back and visit it, and then I will let Guido talk later, but about, Guido, you should probably talk to the planning commission about HCD's comments today about trying to get credit for these units for arena numbers. So we, we've, and so that might be helpful to our, our housing element as well.
Um, one, one question that I had real quick was, I understand if, if an owner or registrant has a house with three bedrooms and wants to rent them out to three different people, that that would be a boarding house. If, if a single owner is renting it out to a couple, a part of the house to a couple, but the owner still lives in that house, is that considered three people, or is that still considered two, the owner? I wasn't sure.
The, the two that they're renting out to is, is.
Okay, so that's still two. The owner doesn't count. Okay, got it.
Right.
Okay.
I have a question.
Because I think that situation is going to apply to a lot of people, so they'd want to know what triggers.
Right. This ordinance probably, it, I mean, we have no way of knowing, but it, it may not apply to that many situations. But again, there are situations that have come up in the past that with this ordinance, the city could have dealt with. But admittedly, it, it may not apply to too many situations. We'll, we'll have to see.
Richard, I think you had a question.
Yeah, I, I did. Did somebody say that it restricts it to one person per bedroom?
I think, at least what I read, it does unless they're a part of the same household. So a couple could share a bedroom.
Right.
Is that correct, what I read?
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, any other questions or comments? Okay, so if there's no other questions for, from us, I'll open it up for a public comment. I think that's next. I don't see anyone other than us on the call.
There, there's no one else on the call.
Yeah, okay, so I'll close public comment, and I'll open it up for discussion. Would anyone like to go first?
Well, I'll start if nobody else. I like, again, Eric, great work. I, I like the new thing, I think, you know, the, the first one was what it was, and the second one, I think, met what we, we talked about, and I think it does it very well. So I would be, I'm a little, I was a little confused as to what we're actually going to be ending up voting on here. And, and procedurally, what we're going to do, but maybe that's something to, to address just before we make the motion. Because I could see the possibility of moving to refer both of these to the council, because we don't know what the council is going to want to do, and it's a, you know, do you want chocolate or vanilla kind of question for them. It's, it's, and, and so, simply refer both of them with a recommendation as to which one we think that they should take. You know, and, but I thought I heard was we would deny one and, and, and pass one, and I think we basically want to pass them both as far as form is concerned. But, but make whatever recommendation we want to make about which one we think that they should opt for. Because it's going to be one or the other, or a third thing that they come up with, but that's not in our, in our hands.
I.
Is that, am I, am I, I don't know, where, what, what are we actually going to end up voting on? Because my comments might be, might be determined partly by how that goes. So, did I misunderstand? Because I came in in the middle of that, so I.
No, I, I actually, I understood it as that as well. My, my comment for that was just that I think that after our discussion last time, and, and after, you know, staff has kind of put together this updated thing, I actually don't think we should, we should present attachment A. I just personally think that if we were to present both, then it might create a dynamic where there, you know, you have to pick sides, and I think all of us kind of agree that it shouldn't be prohibited, especially in today's kind of climate. So, I don't know if, if it's, if it makes sense to just send off attachment B and not present attachment A. I don't know how everyone else feels, though.
That, that's why I was thinking that if we referred them both for, for consideration with a recommendation, let's say for attachment B as opposed to attachment A. You know, but, but we, we don't know that attachment A isn't what the council wants. That's sort of the, you know, I mean, if they, they want to say no, which was, was sort of where this originally headed. You know, I think they need a, Julie or Eric, you can, you can, don't, don't they actually need the text, or, or Guido and John? Don't they actually need the text in front of them if they're going to vote on that part?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would send both of them up, and with the planning commission's recommendation to deny the attachment A with the recommendation of, of, of attachment B. But I think we should get both of them up there, and that was sort of our plan from the last meeting, so that they do have options, because if we only send one up, it's going to end up coming back, and then coming, you know, we're, we're trying to give some options at the council level, so.
Right, no, I can, I can see that. Okay, so if we refer them both, and we, we recommend denying A and, and adopting B, for example, that, that would be appropriate, and then they, they, they get chocolate and vanilla, and they can choose which one they want at that point. So, yeah. So, okay, that's fine. Then, I, I will say, I, I have no trouble with, with, I, I like B, and I, I think it's well done, and I, again, congratulations. A is well done, I just don't like it. I, I have a couple of small, vaguely copy editing things on page five. I think that the where it says, it's, it's about the, the new fourteen point, I think that should be fourteen point three one point zero four zero, and then zero five zero down there. And then there's one sentence. Because the, we, we've got enough typos in the code already, I hate to add some more. In, in the proposed section forty, if you count down the, 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 on, on this, this display, the second line of what we can see, where it says, unless the violation, you see that? It says, unless the violation is of a nature that it cannot be corrected, I'm sorry, cured. I think either it should say, unless the violation is of such a nature that it cannot be cured, or unless the violation is of a nature that cannot be cured. In other words, either add the word such, or take the word it out of that sentence. That's my sense. I'm just, I'm making that suggestion as a, just for clarity.
Guido, I think the, I think the such would go in front of the A, of such a nature.
Such a nature that yet, right. So either add such or take it out, one or the other. And that, that was just a, an editing error we all like to do. So, anyway, those are the things I caught. Apart from that, I would be prepared to make or support a motion at this point, so I'll, I'll defer to everybody else.
Okay, anyone else want to give their comments?
Yeah, so my only comment is, so I'm supportive of the second, second version. And I, I feel like it's, we should clarify that, like, if we are all in agreement, that seven of us are rejecting the first version, and set seven, or six, or however many support the second version, because it's, it is not a question of like chocolate or vanilla, and we're choosing one over the other. Like, we all think A is wrong, that not the right thing to do, and the direction to go in. And my only hesitation with B was, is that going to be all, like, A is in my mind entirely overly restrictive. And the question I had about B was, is that also overly restrictive? That was where my hesitation was, and where I was asking questions, because I'm I'm trying to avoid that overly restrictive, like, governing of, of people's ability to use their property. But as, as it's been described to me, I actually don't think that it is. And in, in my mind, probably different from, from other people in our community, I think that that concept of a company, like, using, you know, I, organizing individuals based on interest, and and providing that kind of forum for people, it could be good, and it has potential, but it was executed poorly in one instance in particular in our town, and caused a lot of, like, distress for neighbors. So it was, like, poorly executed, but I actually thought the concept was really interesting, and had a lot of potential in helping individuals who didn't have a network or community, and came to ours and needed to find affordable housing. So I, I think that the second version, I appreciate that it is much less restrictive. And so I, I just think, like, we should vote on both, and we should be really clear that we're not saying, you know, we just had a preference for one, we, if we strongly feel that the first one is, is too prohibitive.
That can certainly be part of your motion.
And we're also allowed to add additional recommendations in addition to taking the vote, so, so I, I would support saying, and we really like, we, we really don't like A, and we really want you to adopt B, because we don't know what the council wants to do. But yes, I would support that.
And remind me, is this going to be heard by the new incoming council?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I think that also makes a difference, too. There'll be council members that weren't familiar with the iterations this went through. I also, I think, Commissioner Biden, if you're done, I'd like to add, I, I think we see the changing world now. And I think just people who had gotten together, like the situation we were dealing with, it's going to change. There's going to be new groups coming together because of economics right now, after the pandemic. And I agree that we don't want to over-legislate people's use of their properties. There's a lot of, you know, stress surrounding that now, but we should be clear that it isn't a choice. We want B, and A we want to remove.
Okay. Richard, did you want to go next?
Thank you, yes, that'd be great. Just a couple of questions for clarification. On attachment B, the six whereas, whereas shared living platforms have contributed to a rise in the number of single-family homes being used in the Bay Area's boarding houses, the residents of which often made to pay excessive rents to live in overcrowded conditions, and to work. And bear with me on this, do we have any substance support for that? And I ask that because I can visualize being on the witness stand and saying, Eric was saying, so, Mr. Roach, can you support that statement? And having been on the witness stand and cross-examined, I, before I put something like that in my report, I would want to make sure that I have support for it. So, that was just sort of a question that we have for you. And then the second thing is another family at the very bottom of, of the page one. It says a family is an individual who resides alone. Okay, so stopping there, and I looked up family in a bunch of different, on the internet, it looked for city ordinances. Is there a reason, reason why we consider one person a family? And, and I don't have any, I'm just looking, is, is this a right word? Is because some legal issue? Give me a sense of of your, your feedback on those two things, please.
Eric, I think that, that goes to the Adams case, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes to a Santa Barbara commune case, so.
Okay. And then the overcrowded conditions and pay for excessive rents, do we have support for that statement?
It's been documented that the, the shared living platforms frequently, if, if you, I won't speak to always or even usually, but there have been situations that have been documented where if you add up the amount that each person is paying for rent, the total adds up to more than it would have costed them to, to just sort of rent that house on their own without going through the shared living platform. And, and that the number of people who are sharing a single house have, have, at times, been based on community standards inappropriate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, David, would you like to go next?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just following up, I, I still find the definitions to be, I think there's, it might be as good as they can be, but I, to me, they're very confusing, and the the more I, I keep looking at them, I, I admit I can't, you know, I, I don't know if it means that anyone would be able to, like, I don't know if it's inclusive or exclusive, I, but I, I, I have a very hard time really trying to understand what, you know, what situations are going to fall in these definitions. So that's one thing, but I, from what I hear today, it sounds like that probably can't be helped, and this is where we're at, but for someone to just come and read this, I can't imagine anyone's going to understand what it means. And yeah, that, I, I agree with the, the point I think Renee was making, although I'm not sure what we do with it going to council, but I, I also agree that I'm very reluctant to be supporting something that's greatly limiting what people can do with their private property. And I'm not sure that I've heard that there's some great risk in, to, to the city that, that we're solving for, but maybe. But maybe there, there is, and I'm missing that too. But I, I'm not aware of what it is that we, like, I, I don't know what the risk is, why we would do anything that would seriously limit what people can do with their private property.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Susan, would you like to go next?
Sure. I am in support of the option B. I don't, I think option A is not going to solve the problem we need to solve and it's going to raise too many issues. I think option B works. It's a little vague, but I think that's by design. And I think one thing I agree with the comment that, you know, the definitions are a little convoluted. I think it's something that needs to be accompanied like with a frequently asked question sheet to go with it. What does this really mean? But I think it does give us the mechanism to address an issue should one come up. And it is not overly intrusive on anyone's use of their property. So I would support option B.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'll just say, I think that, um, it might be helpful to have some type of, um, like diagram or some type of kind of chart that, that says, you know, if, if I'm an owner and I have, you know, three different tenants, then what would that be? And if I'm a couple and I rent that to another couple, just maybe some examples of, of situations so that people can kind of see what would be a boarding house and what wouldn't. That's maybe one thing that might be a little bit helpful for now. And then, yeah, I, I think that definitely option B, I, I don't know. I don't, personally don't think we should present option A. But if we do, you know, it's definitely a courtesy for the council to, to look at. But, but yeah, I mean, I think that people, a lot of people in the Bay Area and all across the country are doing this type of rooming house or boarding house. I, I don't see the advantage of prohibiting it. So I hope that the council understands that. But, um, yeah, I, I think what's been said already is, is spot on. So, um, I'll, uh, end it there. And if someone wants to make a motion based on all that.
I have another sort of procedural question. Are we going to do one motion or two? That's sort of a Julie Eric question, but.
She's saying.
She's saying two?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would be prepared to make the motions then if you would like. I wrote, I wrote, I wrote something out, so it's easier to make them because there's a lot to these. So.
Yeah.
Okay. So first, there would be with respect to A, um, hang on. I would move that the ordinance proposed an attachment A to the staff report amending chapters 14.02 and 14.30 to define and prohibit boarding houses and to make certain findings pursuant to SEQA be approved as to form and referred to the council in the alternative. And further, that this commission recommends that this ordinance prohibiting boarding houses be denied. Okay, so that would be, that would be the first motion. And the second motion would be basically the same thing, except it would say approved as, as to be. So. I think that covers everything.
And that includes the SEQA finding, so that's good.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Are all the commissioners and staff okay with that?
Can I ask, um, why we have to approve it as to form? Cause I don't know that I.
Well, because we have to, because we don't want them to send it back and say that, you know, there was, we're, we're approving. Cause even if they want to adopt it, they're going to adopt it the way it is. So we have to say something about the way it's written, even though we don't want it to be passed. So that's why I put that in. So that we, we have, we've looked at it and we, we find that if that's what the direction that the, the council wants to go, then this, we, we've looked at it and we, we've approved it as something that will, will do that. So it's just a little sort of belt and suspenders thing. We're, we're, we're voting to do, we want them to deny it. But, you know, if they're going to take it, they're, we at least did our job with respect to that. So, again, it keeps it from coming back to us.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, that does make sense. But yeah, I, I don't know if, if staff and Julie, I think, uh, that, that sounds okay.
And, and if they make, let's say they go with version B, but make substantial changes to B and they want to send it back to you, I, I think it's in their purview to send it back to you. We're just, we're trying to avoid the cycle of up to council, back to planning. So, uh, but ultimately, if they go with B and make changes and then want to send it back to the planning commission to get your final review of it or something, they will still be able to do it. But I know what you're doing is you want to send a message that we approve it as written, maybe not as to form, but as written. So, um, I, I, and I think the council will understand that. And it should be in the staff report too, why you're doing this.
Right. Right. And we're, and we're referring the, the two of them and they get to vote on whichever one they want. It's just we're, we're telling them what we think they should do. Okay. And lawyers always approve as to form. It's just one of those things we do. Our knees jerk and we approve as to form, so.
I'll tell you something that's funny with the county, uh, Santa Clara. Their agreements with the county, they always have a signature block approved as to form and legality. And I always cross off the legality and initial it and just sign it because it's not my contract, but yeah, we always approve as to form, yeah.
Right, yes, yes. So.
Okay, sounds good. Does anyone want to second that? If not, I can second it.
All right. So on the first question, which is to recommend basically to council that, um, the version A be denied, Commissioner or Chair Ahi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bodnar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Doran?
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Mensinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Roche? Commissioner Roche? Kid, is he there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
That motion passes seven zero. And on the second motion to recommend to city council version B of the ordinance, Chair Ahi?
Yes.
Okay.
Vice Chair Bodnar?
Yes.
Commissioner Doran?
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yes.
You, Commissioner Mensinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Roche?
Yes.
And Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
That motion passes seven zero as well.
Okay.
We have it. Thank you, commissioners.
And Guido, I can email you what I, what I rattled off, so you can have that in the, the language there. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll email that to you guys.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So next up, commissioners' reports and comments. Or any potential future agenda items. I don't know if there was anything at the last city council that had to do with us. I'm trying to remember.
Anita promised that the, uh, the, the, the code revision was going to be gnarly. She did promise her colleagues it was, that it would be very large, very extensive. They would have to read it carefully. And, uh, so we should live up to that.
Yeah. I mean, is there any other reports from anyone from previous things? Um, if not, we can go to potential future agenda items.
Okay, for, um, looking on the horizon, we're going to cancel your meeting of January the 7th to give our consultant team a little bit more time to prepare some, um, diagrams and display the objective standards. It will bring that back to the commission for your meeting of January the 21st. In the new year already, uh, we're also going to have a study session on January the 21st of a project at 355 First Street. This is going to be a multi-story, multi-family residential structure. Uh, and this will give them an opportunity to get some early feedback from the commissioners on the design and the points about the project. Uh, the council did adopt a new meeting schedule for 2021 at their meeting this past Tuesday. And one of the meetings on that agenda is joint planning. The makeup meeting to the meeting you would have had back in November of this year. And that's for February the 2nd. February the 2nd, you might want to mark your calendars for that. I don't have a time for you right now, but we will let you know. And then on February the 4th, this is the planning commission again. It looks like we're going to have another study session for a project at 420, 428 North San Antonio, or excuse me, South San Antonio Road. This is another opportunity to look at a multi-story, multi-family building to give the applicants some feedback. And that's the meeting, we're going to bring back your, um, the public land protection overlay district for the planning commission to take a look at and develop a recommendation on the city council.
Could you give us those two addresses again? The first one.
The first one, the meeting on the January the 21st is 355 First Street. And then the study session for the meeting on February the 4th is 420 South San Antonio.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John, those, those study sessions, are those counting towards the five for?
No, no. I've got, cause that's, this is still in the pre-op phase.
It's still in the pre-op, okay.
Five, the five kicks in when the formal, you know, which is why I'm making them do the study sessions now. And I'm also making them do, uh, a community.
So they're still in pre-op, okay. I just, just checking.
Yeah.
Because remember, we, and once they're complete, we've got five meetings.
Yeah, the rule of five under SB 330, yes.
We, we're just keeping a tally on each one.
Yes, and then, and then, and then John and Guido, uh, the, the coming back with the housing element law up, uh, overview, Rena numbers, uh, that's going to council, but I'm not sure. And is it going to be a joint meeting or is it just? I know we've been talking about it, so is it, have we decided anything?
We, we really haven't. We're still waiting for a date. And I understand from our last conversation will be the study session. I think it'd probably be a good thing to have it as a joint meeting. So another, another meeting for the commissioners to, to attend.
And for the commissioners, that's going to be, we'll have final Rena numbers. We're going to be talking about, uh, an overview of housing element. What are Rena numbers? What do we need to do? And just, um, uh, and kind of a, just a general update because, uh, the Rena numbers and the housing element is really important coming up this next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then one question I had, if, for our joint meeting on, uh, February 2nd, if all the commissioners kind of email you, if we have certain things that we'd like to discuss with the, with the council, can we, um, can we do that before then?
Yes, and I was thinking of putting an item on the, the agenda for, um, the January 21st meeting. We need to share, but if you do send, I, I think I would appreciate it if you did send me.
Okay, yeah. So if any, if any of us have, uh, certain topics, then I guess email them to John and then we'll talk at the 21st meeting. Um, sounds good. If there's anything else, anyone have anything else? Okay. If not, then, um, it's 7:56. Happy holidays, happy new year.
Happy holidays, have a safe.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Next year.
Happy holidays.
Next year, everyone.